This conference will now be recorded.
Was not expecting that. I am now. Let me try that again. This is the October 22 hearing for City of La Center, specifically the Breezy Creek Trail subdivision. My name is Joe Turner. I'm the city's hearings examiner. I'll start with some brief announcements and a summary of the process that will follow so everyone understands to take and participate in the hearing tonight. I start by saying I'm not a city employee. I am licensed as an attorney and trained as a planner. I say that so you know you're getting a somewhat independent review of the application before me tonight. My role as the hearings examiner is to conduct public hearings and make decisions about certain land use matters in the city of La Center. In making those decisions, I'm required to apply the city's existing laws. I'm not a policymaker. I don't have the authority to vary from or change the laws. If you think that the laws need to be changed, you can work with city council and planning commission to do that. But state law requires that this application be judged based on the laws in effect when the application was filed. As a hearings examiner, I'm to provide an unbiased decision maker. I believe I am unbiased with regard to this application. I have not had any pre-hearing context with contact with any of the parties regarding the substance of the application, and I don't have any interest in the subject property or any of the surrounding properties. But anyone has the right to challenge my impartiality, to argue that I'm biased in one way or another, and you can do that when it's your opportunity to testify. Procedure will follow. I will start by asking staff to summarize their staff report, copies which are available on the city's website. And the applicant will have the opportunity to present their proposal and respond to the staff report. Then anybody else who wants to testify in support of the application may do so. Then anybody who wants to testify in opposition or with questions or concerns. That should cover everybody who wants to say something about this application. You'll fall into one of those categories. Once everyone has had an initial opportunity to testify, I will give staff and the applicant alone the opportunity to respond to this testimony that was offered. If those responses include any new evidence, I will give everyone a chance to respond to the new evidence. Otherwise, I'll close the public portion of the hearing and announce what I'm going to do. It is important that all parties make their best case to me. Although my decisions are subject to appeal to the city council, the city council may not allow new testimony and evidence on appeal. They'll decide any appeal based on the record before me. So if you feel it's important that myself or any future decision maker knows something about this application, you need to make sure it gets into the record before me. In order to preserve your right to appeal, you or someone expressly representing you must testify orally or in writing before the close of the record. And in order to raise an issue on appeal, someone must have raised that issue before me with enough specificity that people can understand what the issue is. If anyone feels they need more time to prepare, you can ask me to hold the record open or continue the hearing. If I hold the record open, you'll have an opportunity to submit additional written testimony and evidence before I make a decision. If I continue the hearing, we can come back and do this again at a later date. But if anybody wants me to hold the record open or continue the hearing, you must make that request before the close of the hearing today and provide some support for why whatever you want to submit during the open record or continuous period, why that information couldn't be submitted at the hearing tonight. When you testify, please come on up to the podium there. We need to make sure you're on a microphone. Our hearings are recorded as part of our record in the event of an appeal. Please begin your testimony by stating your name and your full mailing address. Please spell your last name so I get it right. And if you represent someone else, please say so. There's no arbitrary limit to the length of time you can testify. The testimony should be relevant to the applicable approval criteria which are set out in the staff report. Also, please don't repeat testimony offered by yourself or earlier witnesses. This isn't a popularity contest, so repeating your testimony doesn't make your case any stronger. Whether everybody loves it or everybody hates it is not an issue I get to consider. The only issue I get to consider is whether the application does or does not comply with the applicable approval criteria. Fine, if anyone has any exhibits you want me to consider, such as a copy of your testimony, photographs, other documents, or physical evidence, you can hand it to me. I'll mark it as an exhibit. I'll consider it as part of my deliberations. Is there anyone appearing online? Okay, so that concludes my introduction. Ms. Merrill, are you doing the staff report today?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Angie Merrill, and I'm the associate planner for the city of La Center. And tonight we have Breezy Creek Trail subdivision. It's a proposal for 4.87 acres. The current zoning is low density residential with an urban holding overlay of UH-10. The comprehensive plan is urban low and parks open space, and the proposal is for 15 single-family residential lots. The pre-application conference for the project was held on August 28, 2023. The application was submitted on April 26, 2024. The application was deemed technically complete on August 8, 2024. The notice of application and CIPA MDNS was issued on August 22, 2024. The final CIPA MDNS and staff report was issued on October 7, 2024. And the public hearing notice was issued and posted and published in the Columbia on October 7, 2024. And then the hearing is tonight, October 22. Here is the, I'm showing you the existing conditions of the site. To the north, we have private Ivy Avenue. And then the next slide will show you second coming down into the cul-de-sac here, and the 15 lots. Also, I'm sorry, I didn't, I want to go back here. Here is a vicinity map showing the location of the property, and the property is showing that it's a budding Clark County property. And to the west is Clark County's legacy lands. Again, the proposal is for 15 lots, and all lots are going to be between 6,025 square feet and 9,897 square feet. The development is requesting to use the density transfer provision on lots 2, 3, and 10. And lots 14 and 15 are proposed flag lots. Tracks A through F are currently, the proposal is for six separate tracks containing one stormwater facility located on all six tracks. And staff is recommending that that one stormwater facility, facility to be located on one tract. Tracks G and H are open space. And again, tract H is located within Clark County's jurisdiction. The density transfer, the minimum density, the LDR 7.5 zone is four units per net acre. The proposed site contains 1.54 acres of critical areas. There are a total of 15 lots proposed, allowing for no more than three lots below 7,500 square feet. And lots 2, 3, and 10 are proposed to be less than 7,500 square feet. The applicant has requested a variance in the lot widths for lots 7 through 9. And then other key issues are critical areas, category two, critical aquifer recharge areas, wetlands, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, and priority white oaks and geologically hazardous areas. The variance for lots 7 through 9, the minimum lot width required is 60 feet, and the applicant is requesting a lot width of 58 feet. The applicant has applied for a variance and for the reduction in the lot widths for the proposed lots, and staff finds that the variance meets the applicable approval criteria according to LCMC 18260 0401 through 6. The applicant provided a critical areas report by a professional, and the applicant provided a revised critical areas report and a mitigation plan. There is one Oregon white oak on the property. The Oregon white oak will be preserved with no impacts to the proposal. There are mapped slopes on the site, and the applicant is conditioned to adhere to all recommendations contained in the submitted geotechnical report in accordance with LCMC 18300 0904. Condition, I, there's a couple corrections that I'd like to make. Conditions nine and 10 of the staff report were duplicated, and so if you could please strike one of those, that would be great. And then on page 13 of the staff report, I referenced code 18.160 for urban holding, and that was incorrect. I should have referenced 18.190. That's the correct code for urban holding. And that is all I have for the land use portion.
Mr. Cooper?
Hi, my name is Tony Cooper. I'm the city engineer for La Center, and I'm going to talk, we can't really see that very well, but I'll talk about transportation. It's okay. So the applicant submitted a traffic report by a licensed traffic engineer, and they looked at the, the number of trips that are generated by, by the, by the number of lots. And what they came up with is there will be 141 daily trips, 11 AMP, AM PKR trips, and 14 PM PKR trips. Now, the applicant used what's called the trip generation manual, and this is a nationally recognized manual that is used by across the country that when they, when they look at the number of trips generated by all sorts of, all sorts of developments, and single family is one of them. So the applicant used this manual, and staff checked it, and it is, it is, we do agree with the applicant's number of trips and AM and PKM. Now, I will, I will say that this is, this is a, you know, the, these numbers are averages what you might see. It doesn't mean you can see that many trips all the time. It's just, this is the way, and it's a, it's a recognized way to determine the amount of trips that you have for our project. So that's the first thing. The traffic report also looked at a line of, the line of sight at John Storm Road, at Lockwood Creek Road, and found that it meets the line of sight requirements for, at, at that intersection. So there's no line of sight problems. The next thing is Ivy Avenue, the access. So access will be from East Second Way through Holly Park subdivision and continue on, onto this new development through, through what's called the local access standard, which is a, which is a city standard for local access, which is a 32-foot paved curb to curb and 50-foot right away. That's what's existing in Holly Park subdivision right now. So what they're doing is just carrying on the same right away with and street section. There is also what's called Ivy Avenue, which is, which is just north of there. It is accessed by Forest Street, and it continues on south all the way down to the subdivision. However, Ivy Avenue is a private road. Is, the property is owned by the school district. And so the city has what's called a right-of-way access and utility easement on Ivy Avenue up to about where the public workshop is. Right there, that access easement ends. South of there, it's private and is owned by the school district. I know there's access easements for property owners south of there, but that's a private road. I'd also like to add that that road is really not designed for any kind of traffic other than access by, by the, by the property owners. It is a gravel road at best, and it has a culvert underneath it that is really very small, and really that road shouldn't be used for anything else other than the private access. So I know the applicant is proposing to put a gate on the north side of East Second Way to prevent traffic from going down that road. And I would suggest that the applicant needs to do that during construction, so the construction vehicles won't use that access point. That's just not really, it's not designed for that. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, that it really is a private road. The next, next slide is, I already talked about the applicant. It's going to be required to improve the subdivision with what's called local street access, ST15. It's the same street section as this carried through east, through Holly Park. The, the subdivision, this local access design is designed by, with recommendations by the geotechnical engineer. They look at the soil conditions, and those roads follow the city standards, but the recommendations by the geotechnical engineer as far as the the actual subgrade. So those, the, the roads are designed, I guess what I'm trying to say is the roads are designed for normal traffic, including emergency vehicles, including construction vehicles. They are, they are designed to withstand normal traffic loads and construction vehicles. So access to the site for construction will be have to go through a Holly Park subdivision for them, for them to build a subdivision. So the next thing I'd like to talk about is, is stormwater and erosion control. So city has an ordinance, erosion control ordinance, and so any, any sites that's disturbed more than 500 square feet hasn't complied with the city's erosion control standards. And that being said, it, we have standards that require that the applicant protect the site from silt from getting off, construction entrances to try to keep the, the site contained with, with their, their construction. And so really, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that goes into that, into that. And so they have to submit a great erosion control plan during engineering review that will show how they're going to do that. The next thing is that over one acre of disturbance, the applicant is required to get what's called the Department of Colley Construction Stormwater Permit. So that's regulated by the Department of Colley, and they have to obtain that. And Department of Colley, Colley regulates the amount of off-site flow that comes from that to make sure that they stay within standards of erosion control and silt. So they look at that. So the next thing I'd like to talk about is that when a site has more than 2,000 square feet of previous surface, they have to comply with the, with the city's stormwater ordinance. And so that's, the slide right here shows that the applicant is proposing to collect stormwater along the streets in catch basins, and then it's going to pipe, be piped to the south, south corner of that stormwater pond. That's called a wet pond, and it is designed to to act as a, as a water quality and detention structure. So it, it, it basically, it has two cells, and the first cell allows silt to settle out, and the second, second cell allows water to carry over, and then outlet through the outlet pipes out to the existing slope to the south, southwest there, or northwest, sorry. And, and then, so the applicant will need to design erosion control and, as well as that, a dispersion trench that will allow the flow to continue on in a, in a sheet flow manner to try to not to disturb the existing, existing property that's northwest of there. The next slide is for shows a landscape plan. So what I was trying to show here is, there's, there's trees that are going to be removed, but along the public roads, the applicant's going to be required to comply with the planting trees at certain spacing. Usually, it's around 30, 30 feet spacing. And so the applicant will replace a lot of vegetation with, with trees along, along that new street. And I also like to point out, so that the access, you can see the access there coming from East Second Way. That's the access to the site. And then, and then the applicant proposes to put this, this gate on the north side to allow just access by the private property owners to the south. And then the next slide. Okay, the next thing is the sewer, sewer system. So Holly Park subdivision, there's 23 lots that are served by a, by a two-inch force main. And that's really because the Holly Park subdivision, when it was designed, part of it is to the, to the west is lower than the adjacent part of subdivision. So they couldn't gravity flow all the way to the gravity system. So there's 23 lots in Holly Park subdivision that are connected to this two-inch force main. The, the property for this Breezy Creek subdivision is also lower than the gravity system that they can connect to, so they're going to need to connect to this two-inch force main and extend, extend that down to subdivisions with, with their grinder pumps from the houses. The applicant submitted a report, a sewer report, to look at the capacity of the existing system with these new lots. And they also looked at the, the pump station that's by John Storm Road and that, that connects to this, connects this, this force main. So they did, they did look at that, and it, it verified that it has capacity in that two-inch force main for these new 15 lots. So I think the last thing is, I think the general conditions, I just had a summary of conditions. The condition is the applicant will connect, will need to connect to the existing two-inch force main for the subdivision using the city of La Center standards. The applicant will follow the city erosion control standards and DOE Construction Stormwater Permit to prevent impacts to adjacent property owners. So the app, the contractor, once they implement all this erosion control, you know, they're responsible for all of their impacts. So any impacts downstream, the contractor has to make that, make that right, clean up. They will usually install erosion control inlet control at the catch basins to prevent silt from getting into the storm system downstream. So there's a lot of things that they have to do. So that's a condition. And the applicant will need to design the stormwater outfall from the wet pond to prevent erosion to the downstream storm system. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. I had a couple, just to follow up on a couple things you just said. Then, what was it? Holly Park subdivision homeowners association noted that there's 39 homes in Holly Park, but you said there's 23 served by the gravity, or force man. I assume the rest are gravity.
They assume the rest, the rest is served by gravity.
Okay.
Mr. Hearings Examiner, I have a couple items to add that
Okay.
if, if that's all right.
That's fine, yeah.
We received a couple of comments yesterday, and so I'd like to go over that. Well, one yesterday and one today. And so one of them that we received yesterday, most of this stuff will be addressed in tonight's presentation. The comments that we received today regarding the trees along Ivy, I wanted to assure that the applicant has submitted a tree cut plan, and that the applicant has proposed to mitigate 72 trees being removed, and there'll be 29 trees planted with the project and 43 native trees planted in the open space tracks and rear yards. And then, as noted, the road from Ivy to Second is proposed to be paved past, is it Mr. Lucio's place at 908? Did I say that wrong? Lucio? Okay, I'm sorry about that. And
To where?
It will be paved, I believe, past, just right past 908 East Second Way.
Right, okay.
And then, we currently don't have a construction schedule at this time, as was asked in the comment letter. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about on page 13 of the staff reports, it's noted that all developments within the UH-10 zoning district shall provide a, or reserve a 20-foot wide natural vegetated buffer along the property line. And the property to the south currently has a urban holding overlay. The proposed plat has a 35-foot tract to the south. It's tract H. And that tract actually belongs to Clark County. The tract also provides access to the parcel to the south, and the applicant is not proposing any development on this tract. It'll all be natural vegetation there. And the homeowner to the south, south, has also provided comments and per exhibit nine, and the applicant would like to, per a conversation with the applicant, he would like to work with the homeowner there to the south regarding that 20-foot landscape buffer. And then the lots located to the west of the property have a 20-foot plus steep slopes setback, and the property to the west is also owned by Clark County legacy land, and it's not developed or proposed to be developed. The slope back, slope setback is greater than the 20-foot required landscape buffer and will provide a natural buffer between the sites. The slope setback is equal or greater than the 20-foot landscape buffer. I just wanted to note that for the staff report.
Is that it?
That is it.
Okay. Cooper, I still have one more follow-up I wanted to ask you. You said that the applicant is going to gate Ivy, and you said that a condition should be warranted, should be imposed that they do that before construction begins. Is there a condition to that effect? Do you want me to add one?
There is, well, the gate is permanent, but there needs to be something in place to prevent construction vehicles or vehicles from traveling down that. But there also needs to be some access to the private property owners because they need to access their property. So I guess what I'm saying is there needs to be some kind of protection to prevent construction vehicles from going down there. So the applicant will, that'll, I, I think some kind of fence or gate already in place might, might be warranted, so I can let the applicant respond to that, too.
Okay. Do you think a condition is warranted, or do you just think that something, the applicant needs to do something?
They need to do something. So I don't know if it's a condition, but it should be noted that they, they need to do some kind of protection from access to that.
Okay. What about the issue with, that the neighbors raised, I saw this myself, is the, there's no mitigation plan. It appears your code requires it before, before we can get to preliminary approval, because 18300 0902D3G requires a mitigation plan with critical area, with the critical areas report, and doesn't defer, allow deferral to final engineering.
And you, and you could comment to that.
I figured. And 18300 0902I, Roman numeral I, requires city approval of mitigation plan as, as a prerequisite for approval of development activity. So it seems like it's a requirement before we get to preliminary approval.
Exactly. I agree with that. And the applicant has submitted that mitigation plan. It was an exhibit that I sent to you. It was either, it was either yesterday or this morning.
Oh, I may have missed that email. I'll have to check and see. If I don't find it, I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay, I believe it's exhibit 22, but I would have to go.
Okay. I have a number of questions or comments about the staff report, so bear with me. Just want to clarify some things before we get. On page 20 of the staff report, I'm not, it said, the very top says the impacts have been mitigated to the greatest extent possible. Okay, this is the variance. Sorry, I forgot which one we're talking about here. What impacts are there from the variance that need to be mitigated?
And that was just, so meeting the one through six, that they met all of the applicable approval criteria. So I was just
So you're not saying there are impacts?
Exactly.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
The, under number six, you're finding branding the variance won't be materially detrimental of the public welfare, et cetera. It's just a conclusory statement. There's no, why won't it be? It's just a conclusory statement. There's no why won't it be?
Right, right. It well, yeah, it's just a statement. There is, I mean, granting the variance is not going to be detrimental to the public welfare. It's too big in the width of the lots. And so I.
It's too big what?
It's just a two foot where variance in the width of the lots.
Okay. And and that won't be detectable without a measurement? You won't notice that it's narrower?
No, no.
I I just need needed. There needs to be a finding that's beyond what the code requires is all.
Okay.
And that's what I needed.
Okay.
Again, on page 20, under critical areas review. Okay, I just answered my own question. Never mind. I thought that one. The GIS packet under environmental constraints map shows that there's non riparian habitat on this site and pretty much everything on that map. But it's not. I didn't see that addressed in the critical area review. So there's riparian habitat and that's clearly addressed associated with stream, but not not non riparian habitat. And the applicant may have some thoughts on that since this is their critical areas report. But I wanted to give the app, this city an opportunity to respond.
And so I don't know, maybe I need to get into this a little bit more. But on page 22, it's talking about the riparian buffers for lots.
This is non riparian.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the riparian, I think, is addressed.
And so and WSP prepared the the consultant prepared the critical areas comments. And so I can go back to them and see exactly what they have to say. I'm obviously not a biologist.
I'll see what the applicant has to say, too. I just wanted to raise that issue.
Yeah.
Can we pull up the the preliminary plat again?
Sure.
Because it appears to me that a portion of the extension of Second Way extends into the 200 foot riparian buffer and it's not mentioned. But it appears to be allowed based on the code because it's a street. Streets are allowed in the buffer. But I just didn't see it mentioned. But there have to be no other reason. I find that there's no other reasonable alternatives based on top topographic and environmental conditions as determined by the director. I'm assuming it's because of where Second Avenue is right now. They have to get it into the site. They have to turn it south. But I didn't see any finding to that effect.
Yeah, there's there's no other way to get access for these going through these second.
Okay.
So they're trying to curve it down as far as they can, I think, but but they'll have to comment on the impacts.
Page 23 of your staff reports. Under other critical area requirements says that the applicant has to state flag and fence or otherwise identify the errors, the riparian area buffer prior to site improvements. Because that extends, what is the riparian area buffer modified by this intrusion, this second street? Because otherwise those markings, if they're on the edge of the buffer, have to go in the road. Can they? Is there an option to move them to the edge of the roadway or back sidewalk, I guess?
I will let the applicant address that.
Yeah, that's also a condition. I don't know which one, but that same issues. On page 21 of the staff report. It talks about the seismic hazard that there are class D soils. Are those, and that is a seismic hazard, is that addressed through the building permit? Because it it requires the the design recommendations from the geotech report. Sorry. Geotech report confirmed that class D soil should be used with design recommendations unless deeper explorations or geophysical studies are completed. Is are those design recommendations which aren't specified addressed in the through the building permit process or are they in the geotech report?
I'm going to see.
We can leave that one to the applicant. That's fine. I want to give staff the opportunity if you want to leave it to the applicant. That's.
I don't know. Tony, did you want to answer that or would you?
I mean, I think this is typical information that's in the geotech report. So under the billing permit, they they have recommendations in that report on the kind of foundation it would be used. So they would recommend that. This is this is just general information about the class.
Okay.
So I I think it's just it's just general information they provided. But the applicant can confirm that.
It looked like it was a finding. That's why I wanted to. On page 24, under priority habitat Oregon white oak. The code requires a buffer based on consultation with Washington Partner Fish and Wildlife and according with best available science. And was DFW consulted and that they agree?
They were sent the Ceped determination and they did not comment on it.
I assume they agree then. On page 24, it also talks about mitigation for the oak trees. But it looks like there aren't the oak tree singular. There are no impacts. So there's a condition of approval. The applicant shall provide a revised critical area report to include a mitigation plan. It seems like that is unnecessary if there are no impacts.
I agree with that.
On page 29. Regarding the treatment preservation or mitigation for removal. Again, I think I just, there are, they're removing 72 trees and they're planting 43 native trees and 29 street trees. So that adds up to 72. So it's a one to one mitigation. Okay. First time I read that, I missed the.
That's okay.
Is the Ivy Avenue offsite to the north, is that available for pedestrian access? It was a lot of, there was some mention that students walk there. I assume students would walk there from here.
It is, it is.
Is there an easement or other?
There is no easement. It is school property.
Okay.
The the access should go through Holly Park, but I think it's a shortcut. So.
Right, pedestrians anyway.
Access easement. It's it's, like I say, part of it is is already on school property, but. Yeah, that's why.
I can't take any testimony, but if you want to tell me during your testimony, I'm sorry.
Yes, that is correct. It it stops right on Ivy 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 Avenue. But but really, the the there's also another access point through Holly Park to get to the school.
There is all I'm trying.
There is. There is another access point to get. It's it's not. It's it's kind of circuitous. So it's that's why they take.
And Ivy improved enough to accommodate emergency vehicles? Because I think that was.
That's a good question. It it is really not designed for it. I don't know about emergency vehicles. That that might be something to discuss. But it's not really designed for any other vehicles other than just access to property.
Okay.
And and I don't know. I mean, it's been around for a long time. It's just a very it's a very substandard road. It's really just more of a more of a just an access road is all it is.
My recollection that the fire district required a second access, which I assume is Ivy. But I also understand they can waive that if they applicant provide sprinklers or other mitigation that the fire.
Yes, that's that's a fire department call.
So that's the fire district's call. Yeah, yes, okay. The the driveway that goes to the neighbor to the south, the neighbor asked about who's owns that. Obviously, it's going to be public right of way where it's paved. But the portions goes across 14 lots, 14 and 15, which would be private lots.
They actually, the the access is south of the lots. The the lots for Breezy Creek have been shown to be north of that access road as I or as I recall. I I think that's what it shows there is that the access road is south of those lots.
How does the neighbors get from the onsite road to their to that access?
There's an access road. Well.
It looks like the road goes across the eastern edge of lots 14 and 15.
It it does, but it's along the eastern edge and then this.
Right.
And then I think I think it continues. The applicant can confirm this, but I think it continues along what's called tract. I can't. That will triangulate tract. There's an access road.
But yeah, I I that I understand. It's just where it it goes across 14 and 15. Will that that strip where the the access to 14 and 15 and the property to the south be owned by a homeowners association or the owners of lots 14 and 15? Because the owner took the property to the south, wanted to know who's owning the property where his easements located.
Yeah, I I think I can't see it from here, but but there will be an easement in there, as my.
I think the easement exists. They can't get rid of it.
Yeah.
But again, this may be for the applicant. It's not a critical issue. There is an easement and it this can't change it.
They, yes, the easement has to stay where it is. They still have to have access there.
Page 13 of this staff report, I think, just has a hypo or carryover from prior decision or rather staff report. Like I said, that's what my notes is, but I don't see where I. Skip that one for now because I can't find it. Has the, will this approval lift the urban holding 10 overlay?
Yes.
Okay, that was my understanding. And I'll just find a few on the conditions. Condition 14 appears to repeat condition seven with the planning conditions. Both require revised critical areas to include mitigation. One just cites to the code and has a few more words in it.
Okay, you can strike one of those.
Okay, I'll delete 14 because it's the other one has more.
Okay.
Specific specificity. Condition 11, the applicant shall permanently mark the outer extent of the buffer. I assume that's riparian. Buffer.
I'm just double checking.
Sure, yeah.
Um. You know, I would I would like to verify that one if that's okay. I would assume the same. But yeah, I would just like to confirm it.
It does cite to the code. I'm assuming that's the riparian code. I just don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, that's what.
Conditions. 17 is a repeat of condition 20. They both require revised geotechnical report. So I think assume we want to address a delete one.
Sure.
Condition 28, I'm just not sure what it's saying. It says the applicant shall provide a reserve or 20 foot wide natural vegetated buffer along all property lines prior to final occupancy.
And that was that was per the urban holding overlay that I had noted earlier. And so all the properties budding the project site with urban holding require a 20 foot 20 foot wide natural vegetated buffer along the property lines prior to final occupancy. And then but I would like to make corrections to that based on the information that I gave to you this evening regarding the tract H and then the steep slopes along the western.
Right, okay. I'm going to have to hold the record open for that purpose and I'm happy to do so. Is it weak enough?
Yeah, the applicant's okay with that.
Okay. And if you, during that, if you can revise a condition 28 to, I'm still that. It talks about that. I know what you're talking about, but I'm not sure what it's intending to say there.
Right.
Just the way it's phrased.
Okay.
Condition 45 talks about a pedestrian path and I didn't see one on this plan. Prior to final engineering approval, the pedestrian path is shown on the plat shall be five revised five feet wide. I thought it might be, but I wasn't sure. And then one last one, condition five, under the public works engineering condition. It lists. Let me, let me get there just a second. It says the applicant shall follow all recommendations and then report what prepared by True North. Will need to comply with the following per the report. Then number six is over excavation. I thought there were a lot more than just that one. Delete what? Number eight? Because that would, that's the only. Six, sorry. I I've written over the top of it. So five says follow all recommendations in the report, which seems appropriate. Six specifies a a specific condition in from the report. It seems if we delete that, all the conditions in the report will apply based on five. I'm I'm sorry. Delete six. Okay, yes, okay. Yeah. Okay.
All right, they need to comply with the geotechnical report.
Right.
To begin with.
Well, that's the extent of my questions. The applicant's opportunity to testify.
Good evening. Scott Taylor, SGA Engineering, representing the applicant. And I'm here to answer any questions as well this evening and discuss the project with you guys. So I'd like to start off with thanking staff for their time with the review and third party reviews. And then Mr. Herring's examiner as well for your time this evening. I think the presentation has covered majority of the neighbors' questions and inquiries on the project. And I believe majority of your questions had been answered, Mr. Turner. But I know there are a couple that I can definitely talk to. First question that was unanswered as of yet for construction schedule from one of the neighbors. The construction schedule exactly is not known at this time. Typically, a projects like to start construction in the summertime. And that would be the goal of this project is to start construction in 2025 in the summertime. The length of construction time can vary for a number of. The length of construction time can vary for a number of different pieces. Contractors and developers want to be done as quick as they can because it costs money, the longer you have equipment on site. So typically, they're going to try and get all their heavy construction done as quick as possible, whether that's four months or five or six months. Sometimes construction things can take longer for details and working with utility companies and some of the, the minutia that goes on. But the heavy construction, they would like to be done as soon as they can, but exact timelines are not yet known. Home construction can take longer, is often done within one to two years, could go quicker, but also could take longer depending on the future builder of the homes and how they sell the lots and building custom homes or spec homes. And so typically, you see at least a one-year timeline for home construction. As Tony mentioned, that there are lots of requirements for erosion control and tracking off-site, you know, not tracking up mud and dust into adjacent subdivisions that would run into their storm systems and plug up their storm system. So if there is off-site tracking, that can be enforced by city inspection for during construction for the erosion control. And also the state, the state has very stringent time restrictions on any tracking off-site and mud that would impact adjacent developments. And so they have pretty steep fines as well that come along with those. Contractors will be working very hard to not track and not have erosion that affects adjacent developments or downstream areas. There is non-riparian habitat area mapped in the GIS packet, but this was not identified by our biologist in their report. And so this is a mapping that covers pretty much the whole town.
That's what it looked like.
Sometimes GIS has had these as inaccurate mappings that we've seen. Oftentimes, you'll have large areas that are mapped that cover miles, and it might be mapped for like a brown bat habitat or, what's the other one? There is a couple different species that have large sandhill cranes, much of called as sandhill crane habitat, and even over existing development and buildings and whatnot. And so that wasn't identified in our staff, in our critical areas report as priority habitat that needs any form of protection or mitigation. The applicable critical areas have been discussed at length. You have riparian habitat that's adjacent to the streams. You have the oak tree that's existing on the very south edge of the site that will remain untouched, and then the wetland on site that is proposed for fill and development. And so the mitigation plan was submitted, just recently completed, and so that can be reviewed and discussed in this one week of open record. It meets all city standards. They are proposing mitigation in the tracks A through F, and like staff mentioned, tracks A through F will be combined into one for stormwater and open space. The mitigation plan proposes three hundred and twenty plants to be planted. Seventy-five which will be trees, so new fir trees and white oaks proposed to be planted in that area to mitigate for the impacts of a stormwater facility. There's also hundreds of shrubs that will be, native shrubs will be planted in that open space tract to offset impacts. Stormwater facility and roads are allowed to be located in the two-hundred-foot riparian buffer if there's no alternatives that are feasible for the project. That's been discussed in the mitigation plan and also in the findings. And as you can see from the site, it is constrained on three of the four sides and the fourth side having existing development to the east. So it's pretty much constrained on four sides. For that purpose, the storm facility needs to go in this location. It's existing field and not forested habitat. And so it's allowed as a use without significant impacts for not removing mature trees to build the storm facility. A forest of trees. There's a handful of trees that were planted by the current property owner around the year 2000, and that's where all the trees on this site have come from. And so the fact that some of those are being removed is unfortunate, but a piece of development that's necessary. The road must connect where it's currently stubbed to the site for second, and it must extend into the site, provide access to all the lots. It's a public road. You're not allowed to use private roads that serve more than five lots in this jurisdiction. And it's built to public standards, and so it will provide emergency access turnaround, delivery turnaround, and public access. New sidewalks will be connected to existing sidewalks and provide access for people to walk. Ivy Avenue is an existing driveway that a easement was placed over many years ago. Mr. Breezy, I think originally dedicated the land to the school, and at that time, an easement was placed over the driveway to the existing home to the south. So you guys are correct, the current property owner owns the land underneath that easement. And the school owns the land underneath the easement to the north. In the future, lots fourteen and fifteen could own that easement area where they'll use it for their shared driveway. One other option is a tract could be platted there, and so where the easement line is, we could place a new lot line. Wouldn't affect lots fourteen or fifteen. It would place that shared driveway which could still be owned by the property owners or the HOA. There's not a set requirement really for who has to own it. It is common that you have existing easements that continue on after development, similar to this case. The road would be paved, as shown in the plans, with asphalt for the public road. The driveways would likely be concrete. And so those would be paved all the way to the south edge of lot fifteen, and that actually goes back past all of the lots. Holly Park and about to the last lot. There's three lots back there that sit east-west. And so that will definitely help cut down on dust, you know, and deliveries and traffic that go to the existing house to the south. Speed limit was a question on one of the neighbors' comments, and you know, typically typically subdivisions and all these local access roads are twenty-five mile an hour speed limits. So that would be posted in the development and enforced by the city. Shared driveways don't necessarily have a posted speed limit, but if you're coming off of a twenty-five mile an hour road, it's going to hold that same speed limit I would assume. Again, these are enforcement issues that come down to city policing. And so if neighborhoods have concerns, you know, with speeding traffic, then they have to reach out to enforcement and or city council and ask for help, you know, to try and deal with people speeding or deliveries or construction vehicles, anything of that nature. As Mr. Cooper mentioned, the road's built to public standards. I think our GeoTech's recommending four inches of pavement over eleven inches of crushed base rock. So it's a pretty significant road section. All of the local roads are designed that way to handle construction traffic, deliveries, large trucks. But as mentioned, if there is damage done during construction, it's responsibility of a contractor that caused the damage to repair things. The streets themselves should be able to handle the vehicle traffic. There was concern about students walking to school in the morning, and in theory, those students should be on these trails or in the sidewalks, but they do cross roads. You know, all public traffic, contractors, neighbors, everyone needs to watch out for students and pedestrians. And so that construction time, you know, is allowed by the city with their code. And so the contractors would not be able to work any earlier or later than is allowed by city noise ordinances. They typically, once the site has had all the construction equipment on the site, they're not leaving and coming every day with large equipment. So it's limited traffic after initial construction has begun. But we understand there are concerns for that, and we agree that, you know, people need to abide by the rules of the road and safety as far as the neighbors and pedestrians. I don't think there's any additional conditions necessary in the report, but just wanted to make sure and discuss these items because I know there are concerns with the neighbors. Staking of the buffer, you know, at the edge of the modified buffer is where that would take place. So for instance, where second avenue is going to come in, you wouldn't stake in the middle of the street, you'd be at the back of the sidewalk.
That's what I assumed, I just wanted to.
Staking there. There would be construction, silt fence that would go along the north side of the site and along like the slope setback. So this plan shows a fifteen-foot slope setback. City staff is, per their code, required a twenty-five-foot slope setback, so that'll be increased by ten feet. At the edge of that slope setback is where a silt fence would go and protect the slope and any construction equipment and stuff to not go in the slope setback. Silt fence would go around the perimeter of the whole project, which is typical for construction. This fencing for the habitat buffer would go along the back of lots one through six. So that is the buffer line. In the future, you would have signage on fence, every lot that would say habitat buffer retained in natural state. That's a condition already. There would be likely fences built, but not necessarily required. Common fencing, you'll have six-foot tall cedar fence or wood fence. They could also do like a split rail fence at the back of these lots, so they could see past into the open space and stormwater tracks. But that sort of discusses the buffer being fenced off and how it will work with construction. Emergency vehicles currently would use Ivy Avenue to access the home to the south. So first responders, police, sheriffs, ambulance, they would all come back there and access that. The fire department was there at our pre-op conference, and we talked with them, and they have comments they provided. You know, they would not like to ever use Ivy for their fire trucks, and I understand that, that concern. It is a very old road that's been existence a long time, has a small covert, and it has steep slopes on both sides and critical areas. For all those reasons, along with the school ownership, you know, we're not able to improve Ivy Road and widen it to be a public road and meet public standards. So fire would need to come in through Holly Park subdivision and access these homes. Emergency vehicles, though, would be able to come across Ivy and access through the gate. So there'll be a Knox box that allows fire department and emergency vehicles to open and get access to the gate code and come in in the event of emergency. Also, in the event of emergency, if the roads are blocked out of Holly Park subdivision, you know, this could be opened and people could utilize Ivy Avenue to exit this area. That's our concept with the gate. Staff supports that gate idea for limiting access. We definitely don't want any construction vehicles ever using Ivy. And no future residents of this development would be able to utilize Ivy either. So it could remain, though, as being used by pedestrians as it is today. All the students conveniently walk across that and through up to the school. And there's a trail also behind the homes in Ivy, in Holly Park that students and the public use as well, and that connects to Ivy Avenue, just off, off the screen to the north. So we're in favor of retaining those uses. I don't know if any additional easement language ever needs to be added for the public pedestrians to use it. It is owned by the school, and there's school students mostly using it. So I think there's, there's already a symbiotic relationship going there. I don't think there are any conditions that need to be added to that effect.
A portion of Ivy beyond this site that the students would use?
Yes, there, if they come from the existing sidewalk, so right at the very northeast corner of the site, they could come off of the sidewalk and go through an opening in the gate or a site area that would be allowed for pedestrians. So that'd be part of this gate design is open access for pedestrians.
So the applicant does plan to provide for that physically, but not completely gating it off?
Yeah, he would have, you know, a side, you know, trail connection or a sidewalk connection.
You just need a gap in the gate, next between the gate and any, anything else that might include.
So the gate would be solely for vehicle restraint. I think you guys have covered all of the conditions of approval that had some overlap or had maybe carryovers. I only have a couple comments, so. I believe condition of approval eleven is talking about riparian buffer. Staff can confirm that, you know, with the open record.
Yep.
But that is the only buffer right now. Slope setbacks aren't really a buffer, and the wetland is being filled, so there's no wetland buffers, and so that should be riparian. And we'd like to definitely review, you know, condition twenty-eight when that is updated and how it applies. Public Works conditions number four, it's on page forty-one. That has a second sentence. It talks about the new houses in Holly Park subdivision. I think that should just say this subdivision or Breeze Creek Trails. It's a forest main in Holly Park subdivision, but it'll serve this subdivision, so I think that makes sense. And then on page forty-four, it's condition of approval six under the SEPA mitigation conditions. That one refers to Lancaster Mobley as the traffic engineer. And it was Kelly Engineering, January of 2024.
I'm sorry, what was, who was the traffic engineer?
Kelly Engineering. And one last comment, just to go on record. Fire sprinklers will likely be used because of the access challenges, you know, with one access point for these homes. I believe there's about fifty-five existing homes that utilize second and come through Holly Park currently. This would add fifteen more homes, so we'd be up to seventy homes on one access point. Other jurisdictions allow up to one hundred homes off a single access point. Fire code is the newer code that's come out with the thirty lots and above needs a second access point. Emergency-wise, we have that partially covered, but it's just not feasible to have a second public access road. And so for that reason, sprinkling of the future homes is one form of mitigation that the fire department likes. Because then they know that they've got that helping them out in the event of a fire. That's all I have currently, and definitely available to answer questions after testimony and then your questions.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions at this point.
All right, thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to testify in support of the application? Seeing none, who'd like to go first in opposition or with questions or concerns? Go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
Gerald T. Minihan.
I'm sorry, can you say that?
Gerald T. Minihan.
And how do you spell your last name?
M-I-N-I-H-A-N.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, as, well, I married into family, but as the family that created Ivy Avenue, at least past when the wheelhouse was, whenever that was, past that point, and if you go by overlap, if you take the old farm, that the current housing development is built on. I would say we created the road clear up to at least Second Avenue. I still have access.
You own the property to the south, is that correct?
No, I'm, I'm at, I'm at fourth, but I own the farm that the Holly subdivision was built on.
Okay.
And the property behind it. Okay, and going by, say, we built the road up to a certain point. Once the residence that Seth and Stephanie are current in is down the road and around the curve. Which was, that part of the road was done by gentleman's agreement. And there technically was no easement there. Now you go back to where he's saying the school owns. The school has an easement onto Ivy, and so does the city. And the city owns a certain, or not the city, but the school. And the city owns a certain, or not the city, but the school owns up to a certain point to the edge of this new development, minus what used to be an old railroad easement, which is kind of like right there at the gulch that divides the school from this property we're talking about. So anyway, my question is, what gives them the right to build over the private road? Because we still have access to our property in conjunction with the homeowners association on the remaining acreage we have behind Holly subdivision.
Okay, south of?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, west, south, yeah. And anyway.
Holly's east of this property, Holly subdivision east of this, I'm just trying to picture where you, where the property you're referring to is.
Okay.
Is it accessed via, your property that you're talking about, is that accessed via Ivy Avenue and this, this easement that, or this?
Yeah, if you go to the end of Ivy, before the curb goes off to their home, there's a gate there. That allows me to access.
Your property?
The remaining property from the farm.
Okay. Great, now I understand. I was just trying to picture all this in my head. Now I know what you're talking about.
And now, as far as I know, the city has easement on Ivy. And so the school.
Uh huh.
But that is north, well, on the Forest Street side of this small culvert we're talking about. The access that went past the culvert was by gentleman's agreement.
So you're saying there is no easement on this site for the existing driveway, is that correct? Is that?
Pretty much, other than gentleman's agreement, which we just carried forward.
After so many years, it's likely a prescriptive easement. It's like grandfathered, not, no, sorry, wrong, wrong word.
Probably close.
Adverse possession is actually what it is. Because you've used it for so long, you create an easement. I'm assuming the applicant would be willing to create an easement over, to legalize that just to make it.
But they should not have the right to build across Ivy Avenue.
They have the right to do.
From Second to Ivy.
I'm sorry, I, I'm not, when there's, when you're saying Ivy Avenue, talking about off-site to the north or, or your access to the driveway?
Culvert. Yeah, we created it, probably if we could get an overlap, we probably created it up to where that big, where the road is, where the big, because we had a barn that ran right along there and it had a driveway that kind of went around the green barn, if you take the overhead map. You know, we created all that, or the family did. And we're talking.
Some time ago, yeah.
Yeah, some time ago. And so, you know.
So when you're, I'm just not, I'm trying to understand what you, where they're building a road over Ivy Avenue, that this road on this site, on the east boundary of this site? Is that what?
I thought it was coming right across. And yet you said something about putting a gate up to prevent people from going.
Okay, yeah, that, that would be, that gate's going to be somewhere north of this, where Second Avenue comes in, where that road is right on the east, that north-south section of the road on the east boundary of this site.
Yeah.
My, the gate's going to be just to the north of that. It's the property of the south, but you, who has, you and the neighbors to the south, they have the right to access that area. So these, the residents of this site don't have that right.
But as far as I know, they were talking about school ownership.
Yeah, I don't have any, the only jurisdiction I have is over this development. And who owns it isn't something, who owns that property, I don't get to decide.
Yeah. Okay. But anyway, so.
I just want to make sure.
I've heard from some, just.
I'm going to pull up Google Maps on my phone if that's, if anybody has any objection to that, just so I can see. Yeah, yeah, that would be great. So everybody can see it, mind it, I'm not sure I can get to. Right, I understand it goes below that. I just wanted to clarify that I'm understanding your concern. So let's go ahead and pull up, staff's going to pull up Google Maps, so we're all on literally the same page. I know where you're talking about and I can visualize it. But is your concern that they're paving over your existing driveway access or the, or the gate or both, that they're putting a gate up your existing driveway?
Well, that, they're doing that and they're proposing that. Now, the foot traffic's not such a big deal. But when they go into talking about the city enforcing, okay?
The city enforcing what? Speed limits?
Uh, parking, speed limits, things like that. They've pretty much been borderline on that for quite a long time. There, it, it's almost to the point of abusive easement. And I was going to, at one point, actually go for it and go to a judge about it.
Okay.
Because.
If you're arguing about the, that your right to use that property, how you, then that's something you do need to go to a judge about. My, the applicant owns this parcel. And you have, you know, at some prescriptive harbor, whether you have the right, an easement right to access across it. But they can do whatever they want with it, as long as it doesn't preclude your access. That, so that's what the balance of rights are there. They can put, they can pave that if they want to. That's their right. You still have access, it doesn't preclude your access. So if anything beyond that is something you'd have to talk to a judge about. Anything off-site, you'd have to talk to a judge about.
Yeah.
So here's the aerial photo, you can see it up here. So there's the house down to the left, that's the neighbors. Your property is directly south of Holly Park, but it accesses, because I don't see a driveway or any roadway extending south from there. I just want to make sure I'm clear about where, still clear about where you're talking about, where your property is. Okay. Okay, thank you. Coming straight along the east boundary, there's that driveway and then it appears, you, you continue south to get to your property, right? Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure I understood.
Sure. This one?
There we go. That's your property, sir?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's kind of defined by what's left of the chain link fence that I see at the end of Minihan Road.
Okay, thank you.
All right, my name is Stephanie Klein.
C L I N E?
Uh, K L E I N. My husband Seth and I are the sole homeowners.
Written testimony.
So this project affects us the most. And so we have some concerns about Ivy. And some of the concerns have been somewhat addressed by the applicant, but I think what looks good on paper doesn't always look good in practice. And so because we're obviously intimately aware of what actually transpires from day to day, I just wanted to add some additional commentary on that. So as was mentioned, northeast Ivy can never be developed. We have the easement, we actually do have a legal easement.
It has been recorded?
That was, has been recorded as part of our purchasing the home from Peter Schlenz. When we purchased, when he split the property and we purchased the 10 acres along with the home back in 2018, we have a legal covenant and a legal easement for the road that actually follows the house, not us. So it will always be there. And the concern that we have is that Ivy was meant to and built to be just a single lane road. So we have had a lot of issues when the Holly Park subdivision was being built, as well as when it was, I mean, we still struggle with this today. We have cars that come down Ivy and they, they have no place to turn around other than to, at the time, they've been recently mowing down that area, the field. But before it was mowed down, there was no place for people to turn around until they came all the way down. Now we're talking about putting a gate in. And if you know Ivy, if you spent time on Ivy, the portion of Ivy that, if you could go further up, so I can.
To the north?
Yeah, to the north. We can see Ivy here. So the portion of Ivy that is in the trees there is extremely narrow and goes over the culvert.
Yeah, I saw those photos.
So you cannot go in reverse on it. So if you put a gate there, you will be in trouble. You won't have ability for people to be able to safely go in reverse without going over a ravine.
And when you say there at the north property of this, of the boundary of this site?
Let's say we've got Amazon drivers, UPS drivers, people who are trying to figure out where to get into the subdivision at. We have people almost daily that still try to come down Ivy. So if you put a gate there, which will assist us in being able to use our easement, you will have daily traffic that is going to reach the gate and try to go in reverse over the culvert. If you try to put the gate in a different location, you will no longer be, you will now be in school district property rather than the private property, the easements that, you know, follow south of that. So where you put a gate there, if, should we put a gate, is very important. My husband and I are also really concerned because when Holly Park subdivision went in, they used the maximum amount of space of Ivy possible to put up their wall. And so it's not just fencing, it's also walls too. And we have to go a little bit over into where the trees currently are to be able to safely navigate when we have larger equipment. We do have to have the ability to have on occasion farm and tractor equipment, semis going down that road every once in a while, because we do have livestock and we have to be able to have emergency services, of course. So my other concern, when we're looking back at that plot, that arrangement of homes going in, depending on where, if we're going to allow those two homes, the way it's currently designed to also.
Lots 14 and 15?
Yeah, access Ivy. Now we have a shared road situation. And we are concerned that we are not going to have a wide enough road. So when you were looking at the paved section, when you had the document out before, if you could quickly, I don't know if you were able to do that?
Do you want the, the plan?
Yeah, when you're looking at those lots 13 and 14, it appears that in order to sustain Ivy as being, at least in its current width, you would have to utilize a portion of their driveways. If you look on here where the squares are, in order for Ivy to be wide enough, you would have to be using portions of their driveway to be able to safely get across that area. So I don't know if that's, if the road, the way it currently is, has been properly measured and that they've taken into account for that. But that is a concern of ours, because it looks like past the huge road, then when it drops down into that paved area, it looks like it narrows considerably there. And we're also concerned that lots 14 and 15, if they are to use Ivy, which I'm not sure how they're able to do that. But if they are able to do that, we don't have any, no, no fencing whatsoever. So we bought the property from Peter, he had no fencing and we have not fenced. So we do have animals and livestock that would end up in the front yards of 14 and 15. Either they can fence the front of their property, which they're not going to want to do, or we're going to have to put a second gate in. And the second gate would have to go past lots 15 in order for our animals to not get out from our property.
Well, I, you, your animals on their, onto this property would be trespassed, so you have the duty to keep your animals confined. The applicant doesn't have to exclude them from their property.
Okay, so if I understand you correctly, we will be responsible for paying the thousands of dollars for fencing to keep our animals out of their yards.
Yeah, because you don't have the right to have them run on this property, never have, unless you have an easement or something I'm unaware of.
Okay. So that's interesting, okay. So we'll, we'll try to do that. I don't know if we'll have the money for that, so I don't know. If our animals will end up in the yard or not.
How do you keep them out now?
Because there's, there was nothing there. So when you put a property there, they're obviously going to be interested. Our, our animals have kind of roamed in that area for quite some time.
So they do wander up there?
And we understand that, but we have to be realistic about how this is going to go down. So that is a concern of ours, that if we are allowing lots 14 and 15 to use our driveway, we would essentially need another gate to go in there so that we can keep our animals off there and subsequently their animals and their, you know.
Those homeowners have the, the duty to keep their, any dogs and other pets that they
Yeah, will be a huge expense for us. That, that doesn't seem fair.
Okay.
Um, so I just want that noted.
As property owners, it's your duty to keep your, your animals confined.
And then additionally to that, then we're also going to be responsible for providing vegetation for privacy purposes, because it looks like at least properties nine and 10, especially 10, will be able to look right into our front yard, right into our home. And it is stated in here that the, the home there can possibly be up to 32 feet tall right in our front there. So I am also asking if that will be the developer's responsibility to provide 32 feet tall vegetation for us, or if that's another thing that we'll need to spend thousands of dollars on.
That's, I'm going to have to look at that. It's, because you are, is the property to the south outside the city? Or in the city, but zoned for?
Yeah.
Okay. Generally, the code doesn't require landscaping where, along the boundary between city properties and county properties. Generally landscaping is only required where it's commercial or industrial next to residential. So I don't believe the applicant is required to. I'll have to look at the code to confirm that, but it's my assumption that they're not required to put any landscaping.
Okay, so then our, so for my questions about Ivy, when will we find out answers about that? Like where, how does the process work where we have some concerns, we haven't really gotten answers on our concerns? What is the next step then?
Probably, probably my decision, you can also talk to the applicant, maybe some of these that may not be addressed by the regular, the code, you can work out an agreement with them. But as far as, I, I want to repeat what I understand your concern on, make sure I understand. Well, I guess I first have a question. You said you have a written easement across this property for your driveway, is that correct?
We have an easement to be able to utilize Ivy for the life of the home, yes.
Right. How wide is that easement? Is it specified in the easement document? Because that's the extent of your rights. Whether the existing, if the existing driveway is wider than the easement, you could make an argument that I can't decide, you have to go to court to get, if you can't get an agreement with the applicant, that you have a prescriptive easement, that you've used it enough for a long enough time to, it's, you've basically acquired the right to use that. It's called, I'm sorry, blanking out. It's called adverse possession.
Okay, so for, for 14 and 15, who owns that section of Ivy?
The applicant does. You have a right to use it, an easement over the top, but they can also use that easement over the top. They, they can do anything with their property that doesn't interfere with your use of the property for the easement or access.
But I think that's the issue, is we're saying that it would interfere with us being able to get down our road safely, as well as others, if it's a single track and it's not wide enough. It doesn't look like they're still providing the same amount of width as what we currently have.
Yeah. And, and again, that's going to, if it's your easement says, I'm going to make up some numbers, says 30 feet, it's 30 feet. If your easement says it's 15 feet, it's 15 feet. If, so that's what's legally required, that the applicant can't change. If your existing driveway is 30 feet, but your easement's 15 feet, and you've been using that 30 feet for, I think it's 10 years, don't quote me on that. And it meets other standard requirements that the courts have laid out for adverse possession, then you could convince a court that you have the right to that 30, to use that drive, that 30 foot of driveway. And which, in which case the applicant couldn't change that either. It's, it's all, it's a different form of acquiring an easement.
I mean, I think the spirit of the easement is that we're able to access our property.
Okay, spirit of the easement doesn't, it's what the easement says.
If I understand what you're saying correctly, if this plan, if we find out that according to this plan, which you can't tell from this drawing, how wide that officially is.
The applicant, I'm sure will tell us when they get up to testify.
Wide enough for us to get down the road safely with larger equipment, including emergency vehicles, we have to go to a judge?
Emergency vehicles would, I have to be able to get through there, I assume, but yes.
Okay.
For, for anything bigger than a, it's, it's probably, I'll ask the applicant how wide that's going to be and how, so.
Okay, yeah, because we have some issue with 14 and 15 again, the road being blocked. It doesn't appear as if there's enough space for those driveways there to be, have cars parked there and for the road to also be accessible to us. So this is all related to the fact that Ivy is single lane and potentially be dangerous because there's no spaces for people to be able to turn around. Once you put the subdivision in there, you're going to have people going backwards down a culvert.
On the north end of Ivy. Yeah, I understand that concern.
Okay, that, okay.
Yeah.
And we also, oh, the other concern was just on the safety for kids getting to school. So I do believe that the applicant did talk about potentially like next to the gate, there being a space there for pedestrians. That where the, the gate would currently be located at, that according to this drawing, there would not be space for a pedestrian area. So I'm just letting people know that they would need to cut into track A possibly, or some other location, that the only access point to get to the school is. or some other location, that the only access point to get to the school is actually Ivy. So the trail that they created for the Holly Park subdivision is too far north. It would be too far north of the gate for the kids from the subdivision to be able to access that. So the point where you put the gate is very narrow there on Ivy, so it's just something to consider that you would want to make sure that you're cutting into Track A to allow for pedestrians.
Right. I think that's something the applicant can address when they're designing that gate and locating it. But I appreciate the heads up.
Yep, I think that's my concern for right now.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Courtney DePorto, I'm...
Can you spell your last name?
Yes, D.E.P.O.R.T.O. I'm a neighbor of Holly Park subdivision.
And is Courtney with a C or a K?
A C.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Just two things. It sounds like the record's gonna be held open for another week.
At least.
At least.
What I'm likely to do is hold it open for probably three weeks. A week for the city to revise their staff report, address these issues. So basically, let me rephrase that. A week for everybody to submit new evidence. The city, applicant, public, anything anyone he wants to raise. A week for everybody to respond to whatever was submitted during the first week, so you can respond to what the city and the applicant provide, and vice versa. And then the third week for the applicant alone to submit a final argument, which they can waive if they choose. But if the applicant has to burden of proof, they get the last word. But that's what I'm likely to do, and I will announce that at the end.
Okay, thank you. I just want to request a copy of the, if there was an update to the critical areas report and any mitigation plan that was provided. I think there's a couple referenced in the documents, but I haven't seen any of those.
Yeah, you can get that from city staff. I understand it's been sent to me, but I haven't seen it yet either, so I can't tell you anything.
And then just a comment on the sewer item. So I heard 23 homes for Holly Park, I guess it's like...
Are on this force main. Yeah, the rest are gravity flow.
Right, just confirmation that that is actually 23 homes. I couldn't find that in any evidence of Holly Park.
Yes, it's in the Holly Park subdivision plans. And I can provide that, it could be provided upon records request. Yes.
And then the sewer calculations form references 30 homes, as I put in my letter. So he said 23, 15 is 38. So if you do the math on that, I won't...
You're saying that the calculations are, math wrong, thank you.
The math would equal 28.933, and the capacity's 29.3. So that's why I want to confirm that the 23 is actually accurate.
Yeah.
Because that's very close to being at max capacity. And that is...
And I'm sorry, what was that form called, sewer?
That was the sewer attachment, it was like a one-page calculation. June 24, 2025. And I think that was on the website. That's all I have.
That's the force. I understand what you're saying, I just want to make sure I get my note correctly. Good evening.
Good evening. Paul Wemener, W E M H O E N E R, 204 East Minahan Court. Just a quick question. For those of us that submitted to the record...
For written testimony?
Yes.
Yes.
How do we know that you received it, since we used the mail?
I did, you could, there's an exhibit list that the city has, so if you're listed on that, it would be received. If it's not on that list, you can submit it again.
I'm sorry?
I can send you a copy of the exhibit list if you would like.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that what we submitted was received. And then my second question is, how do you respond to the issues that are...
I'll address them in my decision.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I should get, I will get everything. So if the city's gotten it, they'll get it to me, and I will review it and respond. Anybody else want to say anything about the application tonight? Good. Anything further from the city in response to the issues raised?
No, we'll confirm some of the questions that were asked tonight.
Great, thank you. Anything further from the applicant?
Evening, Scott Taylor. Based on the survey that we received from Minister Glazer's survey and the research they did, you can see two notes on this plan on the screen. On Lot 14, there's a note, and then on north of the site, north of Track A, there's a note. And this talks about a recorded auditor file and the access easement that is in place. 20-foot-wide access easement over that existing driveway. And I appreciate the neighbors' comments about sort of the history of that, and then also the current uses, and what concerns they have with that. If there's any concern or any issue that comes up as far as access rights for the Minahan family, then they could also be provided access to that gate that would be placed in that location if they have access rights through this easement to their remainder tract, or their parcel to the southeast. So that's not a concern of the applicant or the engineers as far as access. Ivy is shown in this plan, if you look at Lot 15, at the south end of Lot 15, where the driveway hatching the re-provided ends, that's matched up to the existing driveway exactly as surveyed. I don't know the exact measurement, it's probably 10 to 12 feet wide as a common sort of driveway width. 12 feet is a standard, you know, from single driveways. A condition of approval has actually been placed on the project for these, because they're flag locks, that a 20-foot all-weather surface needs to be provided. So what's shown on the plans currently is 12 feet wide. That's actually gonna be 20 feet of pavement. The access as it comes in, off the sidewalk and off the main public road, could also be widened out some there to help with larger vehicles.
I'm sorry, where can it be widened out to?
So where lots 14 and 15 will take driveway access off of Second.
Right, okay.
And the driveway has a little curve in it.
Yeah.
That could be widened out there.
Accommodate that turn?
Yep, that could definitely be widened out. It will have to be 20 feet wide as it goes past lots 14 and 15. So it will basically pave the full easement.
And it'd be 20 feet at the intersection as well, won't it?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
So that should definitely help with circulation or use of that for the neighbors. Anything south of Lot 15 is not proposed to be touched as far as driveway width or surface material or easement, that would all remain.
Let me finish up my note real quick. Thank you, go ahead.
Turnaround concern, north of the gate on Ivy. There are signs, I believe, further north that say, you know, restricted access, no trespassing. I'm not positive what exists as far as signage. But typically, when you do have a dead end, you're gonna end up having dead-end signage and informative signage, you know, that tells people it's limited access. There's an opportunity maybe there where you could have like a hammerhead turnaround, possibly. You might have to talk to the school about using some of their land right there, where it's sort of on the uphill side before it drops down into the creek area. So there's an opportunity there, I think, for a possible turnaround before that gate. I understand the concern of having somebody pull down there and have to try and back out. I've visited the site a couple times, and it's definitely very narrow and has the slopes on both sides. So I think coordination with the school would help to potentially deal with a turnaround.
And who would build the turnaround? Would the applicant?
The applicant would build that turnaround. If the gate goes there and the gate's causing that challenge, that concern, then they would, you know, build that turnaround, a little hammerhead turnaround. You don't really want to promote anybody coming down there
Right.
that has access rights to it. But you do have the public that do not listen to the rules and go down dead-end roads. And so that's one thought I wanted to put on record. The idea that the student, you know, walking around the gate, that could be placed on the west side of the gate, the left side.
Sure.
And so there is space there in the same area I'm thinking of that, you know, could have a turnaround. It is very limited in that area, and we do want to limit impacts, you know, to the buffers, but you need to have it function safely. And I believe all the other questions have been answered. And then staff is double-checking on the items that they need to check on. Did you have any other questions this evening?
No, unless you have any objection to the open record.
No, I'll let you go ahead and discuss the open record, but I think the three-week total timeline makes sense and works well for a number of pieces of testimony, review of the mitigation plan that was submitted, and revising the staff report and conditions.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'm gonna close the hearing. I am gonna hold the record open, as I said, for a total of three weeks. What time does things have to be received by the city? Is it 5 o'clock, or do you have an earlier deadline? Okay. So I'm gonna hold it open for a week until, oops, what did I do? Until Tuesday, October 29th at 5:00 p.m., for anybody to submit new testimony and evidence. So anybody can raise any new issues or respond to whatever was, the issues raised tonight, expand on them, whatever, by the 29th. Anything that anybody wants to submit has to be physically received by the city by 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, the 29th. I'll hold it open for a second week until Tuesday, November 5th at 5:00, for anybody to respond to whatever was submitted during that first week. So the second week is limited to responses to the first week, as well as the revised critical areas study, because that came in very recently. I want to make sure everybody, it wasn't technically submitted during this first, that first week that we're gonna have, but I want to give everybody a chance to respond to that as well, because I haven't been available for review. And then for a final week, until November 12th, for the applicant alone to submit a final written argument. The applicant can waive that, or they can submit their final argument early if they want to, but the applicant gets the final word. And again, anything anybody wants to submit, just let me finish. It has to be received physically by the city by 5:00 p.m. on the relevant date. Yes, sir, you had a question?
Could you give us, actually, a week after the city provides us the information? Because if the information isn't provided to us till the end of the, then we could have any time...
No, I understand. The information's gonna come out, the city has to get theirs in by the 29th as well of October. So you'll have a full week after that.
We'll have a week to respond after we... So we have to assume the city's gonna immediately give it to us.
So anybody can come in on the, I guess it'd be the 30th of October that morning, and get copies of anything that was submitted to the city, including the city's own submittals, as well as the applicant. Yes, ma'am?
The exhibits, those were seemingly handled differently, so I was...
What was handled differently?
The exhibits, so we were given the reports, but we weren't given the exhibits. We could see them in person somewhere. But it seems like the ones that were recently submitted have to be in Track A, which has to be in the evidence, or in our document, and I really want to see those. Are those only available in person, or will you be receiving a copy of those in person?
So we don't typically send copies of the exhibits. The exhibit packet is separate. You can either come in to get them, or, yeah, you can come here, you can email me. My card is, I'm Angie Merrill, and my card's back there. And so you can go ahead and email me, I can send you whatever you would like and get them to you.
Yeah, and that applies to anybody. If you want electronic copies, if that's easier, you can contact Ms. Merrill, and she can email them to you. Thank you. So that concludes our hearing. I will try and get my decision out within about two weeks after the close of the record. And I'll send my decision to the city, the city will send it to parties of record.